I'd like to call this meeting to order and greetings to everybody here. Few people I'd like to recognize, Laurie Salafia from our Military Families is here. Do you have anything to share with us this evening?
Real quickly, I have something I do remember, but Emily Bryan is retired last week from the Army side as a school liaison officer. So it's about that one and I'm taking over.
Thank you for looking after our military children. And I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on the lovely faces I see of our Lee County School administrators. We feel blessed that you're here and thank you for your presence. Please now join me in a moment of silence as we reflect on the activities of the day. Thank you, and if you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I just see Zach Potter from the Herald in a room. Glad you could join us, Zach. It is now time for public comments, and I would like to share our policy concerning public comments. The chairperson will allow for three minutes per person to ensure an orderly presentation and disposition of items. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Information received during presentation shall not be acted upon at the meeting it is received. However, the above provision may be waived by unanimous vote of the board. Public comments shall not interfere with the board's duty to conduct orderly and efficient meetings. Individuals who address the board shall not use language that is obscene, vulgar, contains fighting words, or otherwise disrupts the orderly conduct of business. Discussions regarding particular employees, litigation, student records, or other potentially confidential matters may not be discussed at official meetings of the board. The board chair shall determine whether matters of discussion are inconsistent with these restrictions or other requirements for public comment, and may rule speaker out of order if necessary. Disruption by any person or persons of a public meeting shall be subject to action in accordance with General Statute 143-318.17. We do have a public speaker, Mr. Clark, if you'll come forward and give us your name and address. And Dr. Bryan will keep the time.
My name is Keith Clark, 212 Acorn Drive in Sanford. This board gives a lot of lip service to the retention of classroom teachers, especially when it's blaming away the declining performance of our schools under its leadership. Currently, thirty-three percent of the faculty in Lee County school system has less than four years of experience. It is a talking point. This year, the commissioners provided enough money to address the issue of competitive teacher supplements. The budget reconciliation on your agenda shows that that money has been frittered away on boutique and experimental programs. Your choice is programs or teachers. When you vote on the budget reconciliation, each of you will be taking a stand for or against more competitive supplements for classroom teachers. The budget sent to the commissioners was a dream list that mocks the word priority. Funding that request would have required a 6.4 cent tax increase. It seems that our school administration has no fiscal responsibility and always asks for much more funding than it knows that the county can afford. The board requested $3.1 million, which included thirty-eight non-classroom teacher positions. Of those, six were avid teachers at a cost of $356,000, nearly $60,000 each. Only thirteen percent of the budget, $410,442, was requested for the increase of one percent for classroom teachers and other certified staff. That means eighty-seven percent of the proposal didn't address the top priority of the board. This was the budget before the failing performance scores with not a single school meeting expected growth, and before the bombshell hit that less than half of our graduated students do not pass high school competency test. The superintendent's plan to address these performance issues focuses exclusively on more tightening and supervision of teachers. Let's stop blaming the teachers and start paying them. The accounting commissioners appropriated nearly a million dollars to increase school funding. This is sufficient to have raised the supplement for classroom teachers and other certified staff by adding 2.3 cents, 2.3 percent to their supplement, making it $830 per classroom teacher. Instead, placing programs ahead of teachers, the teachers will only get $340 a month. This board talks one thing and does another. If you do not do what you can do with the money you have been given to help our teachers, why should taxpayers be taxed next year for what you should have done this year?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I'd like now to share the vision of Lee County Schools. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society. Policy Code 2120, Code of Ethics for School Board Members. The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. We must avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for assistance on matters concerning the operation and business of the board. We must avoid the misuse of public funds. We must avoid misrepresentation or falsification of fact, and avoid making confidential information Is there a motion to approve the agenda for October the 13th, 2015?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda for 10/13/2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The agenda is approved. I would now entertain a motion to approve the minutes for September the 8th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the September 8th, 2015 board minutes.
Is there a second?
Sec.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minutes are approved. We can now continue with announcements, and I have a few items under chairman's report that we need to address. First of all, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to recognize Sandy Chover of Wesley Middle School. And as you come forward, I'd like to bring the board up to date on what has transpired. Sandy has just finished participating, I assume it was this summer, in the very first North Carolina Association of Education Instructional Leadership Institute. And part of that notification that I received gives her this responsibility. It says, "One of the requirements of the participants was to return to their school communities to share resources and information. Participants will be reaching out to administrators, colleagues, and association leaders to share their knowledge base and resources via presentations in the coming months. We know that exciting things are happening in Lee County Schools, and we hope that you will consider visiting with Sandy to learn more about this experience and the impact that it has on our schools." And I thought perhaps you'd just like to share with us briefly what you bring to us.
Well, what we did at the Leadership Institute was work on ways, as teachers, we can be empowered as curriculum leaders within the classroom, as opposed to leaving the classroom to do other leadership activities. We worked a lot with Common Core curriculum and dispelling some of the misconceptions and looking at what successful implementation of rigorous standards looks like, and how we can support it in our own classrooms, how we can help guide and support our colleagues. As an experienced teacher, I'm excited to be able to do more with that.
And we, as a board, are certainly appreciative of taking your time to take us to the next level. Thank you for being here and thank you for the participation in the institute.
Thank you.
We've got a little housekeeping to do. As everybody is aware, I suspect, the North Carolina School Board Association meeting, their annual meeting, will be in Greensboro on the 16th, 17th, and 18th of November. And we're allowed four delegates to vote in the first general session, which will be on Monday. We currently have five people who are registered to go. That would be Janice Davis, Tamara Brogan, Mark Akonosho, and myself, and Ophelia Livingston has agreed to go. Dr. Davis suggested that perhaps, since this is her first meeting as a board member, that she not be a voting member. So if there's a motion to approve the four persons following as delegates, then they would be Tamara Brogan, Mark Akonosho, Lynn Smith, and Ophelia Livingston, if there's a motion to that effect.
I suppose so.
The motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on voting delegates to the North Carolina School Board Association? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We have four delegates. One other thing, I think each of you have at your place a list of information on the awards program for the North Carolina School Board Association. And these are awards that are presented yearly by the North Carolina School Board Association at their regular meeting in November. And I know that you haven't had time to look at them, but as you peruse those, I would like to make a suggestion. At about midway through, you will find that there is a place to recommend or to nominate county commissioners for an award from the School Board Association. And given that our local county commissioners awarded our teachers a one percent raise in their supplement pay this year, which by the way is the first pay increase that has been presented in about ten years, I thought it might be appropriate that we nominate our county commissioners for this award at the North Carolina School Board Association. And if there's a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Lee County Board of Commissioners as our nominee for these years ago because of what we've done for our students and our teachers.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this nomination?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add that I think that it's a wonderful idea.
Correct. In that face, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion it carries, and Mrs. Britt can get this nomination together for us, and it'll be presented, in fact, is the deadline is October 28th. Can we make that? We can now proceed with superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Each month, we like to recognize someone for Superintendent's Extra Effort Award. Last month, we were not able to do so, so we promised that we'd be doing two tonight. So the first person I'd like to recognize, and I'll remind all the recipients of this tonight, one of the requirements is you get to have your picture taken with the board. First person is a, how do I say this, a pillar in the community, a very humble person who sort of goes about her way in trying to just do positive things for the community, for Lee County, City of Sanford, and for Broadway, and for the surrounding area. She currently is a CCCC Board of Trustee. She heads up the United Way, former chair of Lee County Board of Education. Has been instrumental in supporting Central Carolina Works. As you all know, the program we have in partnership with CCCC. She was the brainchild behind the Pre-K 14 initiative, which she has formed with business leaders around our community, supports the graduation rate, and other initiatives that have been so important for what our schools do and what our students and children need in our community. She is one of the greatest cheerleaders in the world for Lee County, Sanford, Broadway,
It's very, very special to me.
and our community in which we live.
And you all are very special, this whole school system, all of the work that all of
She also spearheaded Hefson Sales Tax to help get Lee County High School renovated several
our folks do every day to make the school system great.
years ago. It is with great pleasure tonight that I award one of our Superintendent's Extra Effort
And you just continue to do so year after year after year.
Awards to Jan Hayes.
And I'm so grateful to you and to everyone in this room that I know works so hard to make dreams come true for Lee County Schools. And it takes all of us doing that. And it's taken, I haven't done anything alone. I've had lots of help and lots of leadership, and I just thank you for all you do and all that you continue to do. Thank you again so much.
Thank you. The other person I'd like to recognize tonight is one of our students. And I think it's always great when we recognize a student. But this is a student who is at J.R. Ingram Elementary School, and Lisa Duffy, principal of J.R. Ingram, wrote a few words about our student. And our student's name is Rich Johnson, and I'll ask Rich to come up in just a second. "Starting school for a kindergartner can sometimes be overwhelming as he or she learns the ins and outs of being a new student. For any child, there might be hurdles to overcome that make the new transition even more challenging. For one Ingram student, speaking a language no one else at school speaks has been made easier thanks to leadership abilities of another student, Rich Johnson. An Ingram fifth grader recognized a need and sought a win-win in helping a fellow Ingram student. Rich, unleashing his own leadership abilities, began assisting the student daily with getting off the bus, escorting him through the breakfast line, helping him open all his food packages, and helping him to his class. He patiently taught him the things you need to learn to start a school days off successfully. While language is a barrier, kindness and friendship never were. The other student quickly began to trust Rich and looked for him every morning to help make his mornings easier. Rich once stated to a staff member that he almost missed the bus one morning, but in his own words thought, 'Oh, no. What would the student do if he looks for me and I'm not there?'" He also told a teacher that he had a dream that his new friend would one day speak to him. We cannot help but believe that when that day comes, the first word spoken to Rich by this student will be, "Thank you." The leadership qualities that Rich demonstrates daily without hesitation and without seeking recognition has touched the hearts of many at Ingram. Thank you all for being here, friends and family, and just, we're very appreciative It's been said, "Great leaders don't set out to be a leader, they set out to make a of everything he does every day at school, and just a very, very nice example, a great difference." Rich Johnson, we appreciate the difference that you make and the example you set daily example. I know you're very proud. of what great leadership is all about.
Dr. Bryan, if I can interject, if you don't mind.
Rich Johnson, could you come forward to receive the Superintendent's Extra Effort Award?
Looking at these young men makes my heart about this big because seeing young people that see somebody in need and really reach their hand out. One of the sayings I've lived by and heard all my life is, "People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." And I commend your family for supporting you to growing into a young man that sees a problem and reaches out a hand to help someone up. And so congratulations to you and your whole family.
Thank you again. Gosh, I've lost my place on the agenda. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Atkinson to come forward, please, for the Clean School of the Month recipient.
I'd like to say good evening.
Good evening, Amy.
Yeah, and it's a pleasure to be here to award the Clean School of the Month Award. This is the first one for 2015, 16. Always like to brag on all of our schools. We had six of them scored over ninety-six, so we're proud of all of our schools. But tonight, the honor goes to Greenwood Elementary School. And we'd like to ask Ms. Petracca to come up, the principal of Greenwood.
Thank you, everyone. So this is the first one of the year, so I might be seeing you again soon. As you know, you know how I feel about my folks at Greenwood. They really do an excellent job. They're usually here with me, but we had our Title I and Curriculum Night event tonight, and they felt very strongly and asked if they could please stay and make sure the school looked perfect for our event for tonight. So they're not with me tonight, but they are very appreciative of your recognition. And come visit us anytime. You will see exactly why they earn this honor so often. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. This time, I'd like to ask Mark Stevens to come forward, Chief Finance Officer. And then behind Mark, I'd like to ask our entire finance department to please come forward. Each year, the Department of Public Instruction recognizes, through various organizations, the financial leadership of school districts in the state. And this year, forgiving Mark, I'm not sure if this is the seventeenth year in a row or the eighteenth year in a row.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. The finance department for Lee County Schools has won the Government Finance Officer Association Certificate of Achievement Award, the Association of School Business Official Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award, and North Carolina State Schools Achievement and Financial Resource Management Award. So, three of the same awards, eighteen in a row. The streak is on, Mark. So, but we want to congratulate you and thank you for a job well done and all of your hard work because it's just really hard for, if you haven't seen it in operation, it's really hard to understand exactly what you all do and everything you do every day. So thank you for everything and congratulations on the award. Mark, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I just want to add that we were recognized at the DPI Summer Conference for our three awards, and out of one hundred and fifteen LEAs, only thirteen got all three, so we were going with thirteen. So I always feel proud to be there, recognized.
And I want to also say this, Mr. Chairman, that I just feel like without the finance department, things would not be running as smoothly as supposed to do. And you guys are doing a good job because, you know, our teachers get their pay on time and everything is running smoothly. Sometimes we need help, and you guys let us know what we need to do. I want to say to all the members of the finance department, as the chair of finance, thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you all so much. This time, Mr. Chairman, two things on the docket. One, I've asked our principals to be here tonight from each level, elementary, middle, and high school. I wanted them to give, provide an overview of things that we're doing within the school district to not only support and achieve growth for our schools for next year, but to make sure everybody has a very keen overview of the things going on in our elementary, middle, and high schools. And after that, for whatever sort of they leave that's not on the table, I will cover what I want to talk about tonight with sort of a roadmap for school achievement and median growth. So, we really didn't talk about an order, so I think I'll ask the elementary schools to come up first, if that's okay. And we will go from there. And we'll allow some of our guests to exit as well, if they want. Thank you for helping out, Frank. And while Frank is getting all that set up, I think as everyone comes to speak, if you could just, maybe for the audience and for the board, just familiarize everybody, if you could say your name and the school you're principal of, or your position as teacher in the work you're doing, and then we will go from there.
Good evening, board members and other guests in the audience, now that the audience is a little bit smaller. But we originally have to make presentations every time at our CNI meeting, and as an elementary group, it becomes quite a task at the end. If you're the last one to speak and everyone has gone before you, because we have a lot of similarities amongst the schools, there's a lot of extra pressure if you're the last one to try to come up with something original. So, we decided that it would be best if we could take this and basically kind of give you a synopsis of what's going on within our buildings, but kind of everybody take their slide and share their piece. So I'm gonna start with Leader and Me.
Good evening, board members. I am Lisa Duffy. I'm the principal at J.R. Ingram. And I want to also say this, Mr. Chairman, that I just feel like without the Finance Department, things would not be running as smoothly as supposed to do. And you guys are doing a good job because, you know, our teachers get their pay on time and everything is running smoothly. Sometimes we need help, and you guys let us know what we need to do. I want to say to all the members of the Finance Department, as the Chair of Finance, thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you all so much. At this time, Mr. Chairman, two things on the docket. One, I've asked the, our Principals to be here tonight from each level, elementary, middle, and high school. I wanted them to give, provide an overview of things that we're doing within the school district to not only support and achieve growth for our schools for next year, but to make sure everybody has a very keen overview of the things going on in our elementary, middle, and high schools. And after that, for whatever sort of they leave that's not on the table, I will cover what I want to talk about tonight with, with sort of a roadmap for school achievement and meeting growth. So, we really didn't talk about an order, so I think I'll ask the elementary schools to come up first, if that's okay. And, and we will, we will go from there. And we'll allow some of our guests to exit as well, if they want. Thank you for helping out, Frank. And while Frank is getting all that set up, I think as everyone comes to speak, if you could just, maybe for the audience and for the board, just familiarize everybody, if you could say your name and the school you're Principal of, or your position as teacher, and the work you're doing. And then we will, we will go from there.
Good evening, Board Members and other guests in the audience, now that the audience is a little bit smaller. But we originally have to make presentations every time at our CNI meeting. And as an elementary group, it becomes quite a task at the end. If you're the last one to speak and everyone has gone before you, because we have a lot of similarities amongst the schools, there was a lot of extra pressure if you're the last one to try to come up with something original. So, we decided that it would be best if we could take this and basically kind of give you a synopsis of what's going on within our buildings, but kind of everybody take their slide and share their piece. So I'm gonna start with Leader and Me.
Good evening, Board Members. I am Lisa Duffy. I'm the Principal at J.R. Ingram. And as you know, Leader and Me has been a part of this school district for a couple of years. Tramway and Deep River have entered into Year One this year. That means that all of their staff have been trained on the Seven Habits as well as the Implementation Day. So they are incorporating the ideals of the Leader and Me throughout their staff and with their students. J.R. Ingram and J. Glenn Edwards, as well as Greenwood and Bullock, have begun Year Two. The Year Two focus in Leader and Me is on WIGs, which are wildly important goals that we are writing personally as well as academically. We are tracking that information and the success towards those goals with scoreboards and other data-tracking pieces in their leadership notebooks. And we continue to incorporate leadership roles throughout our buildings. And as you can see with fine young men like Rich Johnson, we are seeing even more students step up in ways that maybe we would not have seen before. So Leader and Me continues to be a great success throughout all of our buildings.
And again, back up here, George Rayly, Principal of Broadway Elementary. This year, our district has decided to go Avid district-wide, beginning in all elementary schools in grades four and five. I think Edwards has started grade three, four, or five, and Broadway is doing two through five. And this particular process has kind of invigorated our teachers. It's also invigorated our students. One of the main components about Avid is, is something called WICR, basically Writing Inquiry Collaboration Organization and Reading to Learn. And one of those pieces that we definitely thank Dr. Brian and the board for was supplying our children in Avid with organizational binders. And thus far, they've proven, even with a little bit of binder gate going on early on, I think we've remedied that. But our students are definitely more prepared, more organized right now, and really reaping the benefits of Avid. We have Avid Visit scheduled this coming November, which is basically when the folks from the region come in and they see how well it's being implemented. We've had trainings, I think there was a training Saturday for some Avid strategies, where actually Avid came to Lee County because of the high interest that Lee County's demonstrated. Lee County, I think, has taken the forefront, at least in our, our region. We've got more training coming up this October and into March. Broadway and San Lee Middle School are actually Avid Showcase Schools that will be seen in March sometime this coming year. But overall, I think Avid's gone well, and from these folks, the feedback's been good, and our students are definitely reaping the rewards.
My name is Amy Lundey. I'm Principal at Deep River Elementary School, and I get to speak to you about accountability. Not only have we been learning about Leader and Me and Avid in the first few weeks of school, we have done lots of assessments with our students. We've had our BOG, which is the Beginning of Grade for third graders. That's their first glance at an EOG test. So this will be their first data point for standardized testing, which that we gave the first two weeks of school. Our kindergarteners participated in the Kindergarten Entry Assessment for the first time this year, and they were administered print awareness and object counting. So this is something that's coming down, and our kindergarten teachers had to administer this with all kindergarteners within the first 60 days of school. So we're excited about that and learning about what our kindergarteners know. Also, our kindergarten through third grade teachers also administered the M-Class BOY, Beginning of Year Administration. And we do this three times throughout the year. So we do the Beginning of Year, and then we do it again in January for the Middle of the Year, and at the End of the Year in May. And this kind of helps us track the reading of each of our students in kindergarten through third grade. And this also is progress monitored in between those benchmark times by the teachers. If students are performing significantly below grade level and they're a red, they're progress monitored every 10 days. Those students who are just slightly below grade level are yellow, and they are progress monitored every 20 days. And those students who are performing on grade level or above are monitored each quarter. So the teachers have lots of resources there to address the reading, and the program will give them lots of interventions and strategies. So we're just always looking for time during the day to administer the M-class progress monitoring. And we've also completed our I-Ready Diagnostic with all of our K through fifth grade students. And this is a huge undertaking with kindergarteners, but it also is something that we feel is very important. And we just want you to know that at the elementary level, we do feel like we have an abundance of data to be able to track and see what our students are doing. Our teachers also use weekly and bi-weekly Common Assessments to compare standards across the grade level, and those are things that we talk about at our PLC times. So we just want you to know that we are looking at this information, we're looking at students, and we're trying to put things in place to close that achievement gap for our students.
Hi, I'm Christina Womble. I'm the Principal at J. Glenn Edwards Elementary. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about curriculum instruction, stronghold of what we do every day. This year, we're really excited that we have AIG Specialists working part-time at all our elementary schools. We rotate on a weekly basis, and that has been helpful to all our teachers in four, five with the pull-out model that we have moved from and now we're doing with the inclusion, and that we also do with the K-3 nurturing piece. So now we're fully staffed, having AIG Specialists at all the schools. We started out trying to fill some of those positions, so we're really excited and look forward to moving where we can potentially have one at all of our schools full-time for next year. We're also in Year Two with our Literacy Specialists. We started that last year. We all have one to two working in our buildings. That has been also very important for our instructional design that we've used this year. Those teachers pull different grade levels depending on what school they work with. But again, it's been very helpful having additional set of hands and specialists working with our literacy. We use a lot of our Title I money to hire reading tutors and math tutors to help our kids so we can have smaller group instruction throughout the day. And of course, professional development is a big piece of what we do. We meet weekly with our PLCs, and we are just hitting the ground running, making sure all our new teachers are trained with our existing and new programs so we can have the highest qualified folks in our buildings helping kids each day. This has been tricky every time. I'll defer to Frank. He takes care of me every day.
Hi, I'm Amy Petracca. I'm the Principal at Greenwood Elementary, and I am giving you really a follow-up. This was a discussion we started at the end of last year. You may remember that Ms. Lundey and I presented an idea about a different entry system for our kindergarten students, and we just wanted to give a report about that. We did have positive feedback from all of the schools. All of our traditional elementary schools participated in this this year. So our students started their year with their kindergarten screening. So our teachers found it very helpful, as we predicted they might. They were able to meet all of the students, all of the kindergarten students, whether they were going to be in their class or not. They were able to give their assessments to students in real time. So instead of six months ahead of where they should be, they were able to give it to them and see where they were. It helped us to balance out our classes for our kindergarten teachers this year, and the teachers all felt that the process was very helpful. I know that when I talked to you about this at the beginning, I talked a lot about parents, and that was still a key idea for us. We spent a lot of time this summer, all of the Principals kind of sharing ideas, making sure we were covering all of our bases because this was a very big change for us, and we didn't want to miss a beat. But we did find that the parents, for one, when, when parents came into my school for open house, remember, we hosted a special open house just for kindergarten the first Thursday of the week. And the kids were dressed up. It was an exciting time. Families were able to come, and they had a night all to themselves. We had tremendous participation for that first open house night. And all of us felt like we really got an opportunity to connect with those parents because each of those staggered entry days, we all had a parent meeting where they had us just for that time to ask questions, voice their concerns. For our parents that are particularly our brand-new parents to school, they have lots and lots of questions. Where do I pick them up? Where, you know, just things that we take for granted because we do it every day. And I think it put them at ease to be able to ask all of those questions directly to the source before they sent their children to stay with us. We were very happy with it. The teachers, our fingers crossed that we'll be able to do that again next year. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Huffer, and I'm the Principal at Warham Williams Elementary Alternative School and Child Development Center. So I would like to share with you that we have successfully transitioned our high school graduation class of 2027, 2028 into our school system. And they had, they are all coming with great smiles now, and they now, they're beginning to cry at the end of the day because they are not ready to go home. And Saturday and Sunday, they don't understand why they cannot come to school. But anyway, I'm very happy to report that we opened an universal pre-K class. It's a blended classroom with exceptional children and typically developing children to try to provide a new transition for students with disabilities that are ready for a regular setting but not quite at that point. So it's a smaller classroom, and it has been successful. Parents and children, they, they are both very happy, and children are learning tremendously. We are getting ready to have our first Parent Night where we share how children learn best and how we need to have expectations based on their development. And so we are very happy. The children are gonna be sharing with their parents how they learn. And at the same time, our elementary students will be having that Parent Night that evening. And I'm very happy to report that the students that return to us in the elementary program are, are meeting their goals. So we have had a pretty successful beginning of the year. Everybody showing their great behavior. So hopefully, we are preparing for a soon transition with the majority of them. And at the same time, we are welcoming new students to our elementary program.
I'm Brandon Morehouse. I'm a teacher at Deep River Elementary, fourth grade. And I'm responsible for the website that all the teachers are getting for the fourth grade math. A couple of things that I wanted to show the board about the site is it has the pacing guide for third, fourth, and fifth grade math on it. We are going to, we went to a spiraling pacing guide this year instead of just a standard-based pacing guide, which we thought would be better for retention of information by the end of the year. There are two parts specifically to this pace, to this website that I wanted to show the board. And the first part is right here, well, the, the main part is, here's the pacing guide. You can click on it, and there's a paper pacing guide for the teachers. And the two parts that the teachers are gonna use the most are right here. We split up the objectives into quarters, and there's two tabs. The first tab is the Standards tab, which the teacher's going to use to find the information they need to teach their lessons that Lee County has already provided for the teachers. It's sort of organized there for them, and they can choose what they want to, to use. So I'm gonna click on that one first. So at the top, they have the standard, and then the next thing you would see is the pacing that's required for that standard. This standard, which is 4.NBT1, which deals with place value in fourth grade, it is, it is just mainly taught in fourth, in first quarter, and it is continued as needed throughout the year. Others, other objectives are done throughout the year, split up. For example, if I went to the, to the math, the, sorry, the multiplication one, we split up multiplication into each different quarter. So instead of just doing multiplication on one quarter, first quarter, we're doing two-by-one digit multiplication, second quarter, three-by-one multiplication, third quarter's three-by-two multiplication. So on this site, they have ways to increase, the teacher has ways to increase rigor for the students, which is different questions that could increase the, the, increase the knowledge base that the students have from that standard. About the math usually deals with ideas, suggestions on how to teach that certain topic to the student, as well as the, the part's probably gonna be used more, most is the resources. These are all the resources the county has compiled for us throughout the years to deal with the common core math. All these resources are at each school, and the teachers can pull from these resources to use in their classrooms. Along with, there is a video resource where we've got the LearnZillion videos, and some of, we're starting to put on Khan Academy videos based on that objective so the teachers have another way to show students how to do it, as well as diff, various online resources, games, and lessons that the teacher can pull from for this one objective. So it's sort of streamlining the process of finding information for the teachers and so they can have an easier time making their lessons. The second component that is probably the most important component to this is the assessments. I'm gonna go back up here, and I'm just gonna show you the assessments for NBT1. These assessments, if you look right here, are assessment tasks. Each one of these assessment tasks is about, is a question, and the purpose of this assessment task is to provide the teacher with a rigorous question that, that can show that the student can go beyond the basic information. Because in Lee County, it seems like with especially third, fourth, and fifth grade, we have an issue with going beyond the basic information for a lot of our students. So these assessments will allow us to do that. I'm just gonna pull up one real quick just to show you. It's usually just one question, and there's a writing component or a demonstration component to that question to show that the student actually understands what they're doing in the question. And these are graded based on a Rubric scale of, I'm just gonna show you, here's the Rubric, from zero to three. So zero obviously is no accomplishment whatsoever, and the three is full accomplishment, understands it completely. And the teachers have notes how to grade these also. This information is being used to ability group students based on what they, what, based on a skill that they've been taught in the class. It's used for, it's gonna be used for parent communication with the report cards, and it's gonna be used to find specifically what skills, as a teacher, you're struggling with teaching your students. There is a compare, there is a parent component to this also that I do not have up to show you, but it is, it is a parent website that has a pacing guide for the parents that they can see what the vocabulary that their child is supposed to be using, as well as they can see what their child's learning. And all, some of the, there's resources on there to help them, like games and ideas that you can do at home, as well as the same videos that we have on our site is on the parent's site. The parents don't have access to our site. It is password-protected because we don't want the parents to see all the assessments and everything that we're trying to give their students. But it has a wealth of information for those parents. The county is also currently working on a sixth through eighth grade math site, as well as high school math sites are coming down the road, as well as a reading as high school math sites are coming down the road, as well as a reading math site, I mean, a reading site for 3-5. Also, I'm in the process of building the 3-5 science site. So, there's going to be a lot more of this technology coming. We really wanted the teachers to be able to find their information a lot easier, as well as have somewhere where they can find assessments that could be beneficial to their students. Thank you.
Dr. Brian, while they're working on that, it, I don't know if your presentation's over, but I have a couple of questions when it's over.
Okay, they're, they're not done yet.
Okay, I didn't know. Wasn't sure, I saw the-
Okay, that's okay.
I'm Ann Beal from Tranway and I want to share with you all some of the highlights of what our students have been learning during these first few weeks of school. So, it says I'm going to have a focus on literacy instruction, but I'm really going to hit every grade level K through 5 and tell you just a little bit about what they've been learning. In kindergarten, they are working on lower and uppercase letters and sounds. They're learning their sight words. They're using Letterland and a program called SRA. I'm pretty sure the SRA stands for Science Research Associates. Tranway uses Letterland. So, am I right about the SRA? Okay, alright, great. And they're using these programs to help them make their words and blend those sounds together. They are learning their numbers, 0 through 10. They're recognizing their numbers and ordering these. They're matching numbers to sets. They're learning about flat shapes and 3D shapes and they're orally counting to at least 30. School rules and procedures, friends and family and community helpers are some of the themes that they've been studying, as well as Leader and Me. And of course, kindergartners are taught the seven habits. In 1st grade, the teachers are using the basal with the students for reading, chapter books, and nonfiction leveled books and differentiated reading groups. We use our data to form those reading groups. Written response for leveled texts based on M-class and using the same vocabulary that is found in M-class. Addition, subtraction, word problems, and students finding key words to determine how to solve the problem. They are graphing and using place value. 1st graders are also studying animals, the moon, and planets, and, and, excuse me, and plants, I meant to say plants. And they are writing a lot with their social studies and their science. They're tying that writing in with their studies there. In 2nd grade, they're focusing on their reading response journals. They're writing a response to what students have read. They have reading groups using the themes of exploration and friendship, tying in how characters use the seven habits in the stories that they read. Teaching skills such as author's purpose, fact and opinion, drawing conclusions while using different genres. Nonfiction articles and scholastic news, the basal and chapter books are utilized in 2nd grade. The unit of weather has been taught and the concept of sound is coming up next. In math, they focus strongly on place value, word problems, number sense, and technology and collaboration among students is interwoven into all of these lessons. In 3rd grade, they are reading from various genres, text feature study through nonfiction, think alouds, chapter books, and weekly poetry. And math, multiplication and division, single digits and with multiples of 10s, using math rap songs to help with multiplication, especially when it gets to the sixes and above the sixes. They are learning about rounding, line points, and number lines. They are learning about matter and science, force and motion, energy, healthy foods, geography, the continents, and they're also doing map studies. In 4th grade, reading novels, nonfiction, and using One-Pagers, which is an Avid tool. This is when you condense a lot of information in text form to one-page format with graphics. In math, basic fractions, multiplying 3 to 4 digits by 1 digit, some division reviewed, they have reviewed addition and subtraction. They are learning and, and working on place value, multiples and factors, multi-step word and number problems. Phases of the moon and nutrition and A- Avid activities that are focused on 2-column notes and also organization skills. In 5th grade, differentiated novel, differentiated novels and language arts. They are becoming pretty good weather forecasters according to their teachers and science. They're working on 2 to 3 column note-taking and organization. They're learning about place value, reading and writing large numbers and decimals and multi, they're multiplying and dividing decimals. Thank you.
Ms. Beal, if you could give me a couple of the phone numbers with the weather forecasting.
Yeah. That could come in. Mike, come in here.
In the next few months, definitely.
Slide 10 and we can click through. You got it, guys. Alright. Hi, board, I'm Stephanie Clark and I am the principal at BT Bullock. Thank you so much for having us here and thank you for the guests that are still here. None of what we do would be complete without involving our parents. They're a pivotal piece of the picture of the pie. And we start off at the beginning of the school year with open houses, which is a really huge event for all of us to invite our parents into our building and to explain the wonderful things that we have going on and the incredible instructional things that we've shared with you. We did trial a few new things this year. We had some stations in some of our schools, which just consolidated some of the information, the mass of information we want to share into buckets so that parents could gather what they needed in places of common areas such as Leader and Me stations or stations that in, where they could sign all the forms they need to sign or gather their information for communication. So, we trialed that this year, learned some things through the process. It was very successful, but hope to move forward if that plan tweaked a little bit in the years to come. As far as curriculum and instruction nights, it's a huge thing that we've all been embarking on at all of our schools, sharing the great things that are going on in our schools and really putting students front and center to share those things. Us taking a step back and allowing our students to share what they are learning and how they are leaders in our school, which has been pretty phenomenal to see. I can't say it any other way, it's been phenomenal to watch them take that lead. It also is a great opportunity for us to have Title I nights where we just explain how Title I money is used in our schools and how we use that money to best serve our kids and meet their needs, which is pivotal in us serving them. We also have ESL parent nights in all of our schools. We want to make sure that every single family that is part of the Lee County community feels welcome and has a way to come in and get information and, and want to get them plugged into our schools, folks who perhaps don't speak English. There is a pivotal role that they play in educating their children and we want to get them plugged in through ESL nights. And then, also, the fun stuff. We've all had grade level performances, whether it be autumn themed or academic in nature. We've had performances of various grade levels throughout our schools. And then, of course, you could forget fall festivals and all those other wonderful community events where we get our parents and our students and all of us together to celebrate what we're doing in our schools. Thank you.
The last one standing. We, I'm Jennifer Allen, I'm the principal at Fordale Night School, the Children's Center. We have a unique set of students. We serve anywhere from preschool to the age of 22, students with special needs. Our preschool, we have blended classrooms that have students with disabilities as well as typicals. They use the creative curriculum. And if you know any 4-year-olds, we still have 3 slots. And if we don't fill those slots, we can't put any more students with disabilities in there or we'll lose funding. And I know that Warren Williams also needs 6. So, if you know any typical, typically developing students, send them our way. As far as our school age, we have embarked in putting a new curriculum in place for literacy this year. It's called Unique. It is web-based. The kids have loved it so far. It puts everyday stories into a newspaper as well as monthly lesson or daily lessons for the students to embark in and then learn, and learn. And all of our school-aged children go by the Extended Common Core. So, we're, we're different, we're unique and we wouldn't have it any other way. So, hopefully after tonight, we will be fully staffed. So, that's a great thing. But that's us. And I, and I can go with any of the groups because I serve, we serve preschool to 22. We'd like to keep up.
Mr. Chair, any questions for the elementary group?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that they weren't quite finished. I saw the websites and I thought that was the end of the presentation. I do have a question for Mr. Morehouse, the teacher from Deep River. The websites, I, I look, I mean, I'm really excited about that. I mean, it's wonderful to have all that on there for the teachers to use. And as a teacher, I was wondering, I know that you're still working on getting some up and running for the different subjects and it's beginning, you know, it's still kind of early in the school year. But how do you feel teachers are receiving those websites? Are they, are they, is it working for them? Are they using them well? Is it, is it turning out well for the teachers with instruction in the classroom?
The, the websites, the teachers that I've talked to, I've had a lot of strong, positive feedback with. I think there's a lot of adjustment to instruction with using these assessments because the assessments, they are 1 question or 2 questions and it's a lot of explanation that goes with it. And it's a lot of deeper thought that a lot of our students aren't used to and our teachers aren't used to making sure that they're teaching to that level. So, there is, there is that learning curve with it, yes. But I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from a lot of teachers around the county because I've been to each school, showing them the website and a lot of them are like, yes, this is exactly what we've been needing for so long.
Good. So, the second part, I guess, would be, so they, they feel like using the assessments has really been helpful to kind of gauge what children need to work more on and how they're doing to, to help gauge them with instruction for each child?
Yeah, I believe so. There's always going to be a couple that, of teachers that are slower to get used to using these because it is different. It's not multiple choice. I mean, it's, it's all, it, it takes, it takes you rethinking sometimes what, how you're teaching something. Because the end is to be able to solve these sometimes complex questions.
Okay, thank you. I, oh, I'm sorry, while you're still standing there, I have the self-serving question as a mom of a 4th grader. You said there are parent websites, but that website address wasn't up there. Do you know what that website is?
I, I know that website, I built it, but I don't have the website address. I know each principal was given the website address and I'm supposed to be dispersing it throughout the county.
Excellent, thank you. Now, I have one more question and this is for any elementary principal that wants to answer. A couple of slides back, it was talking about the instructional support. You're talking about the part-time AIG teachers and the tutors and there's one more thing. It went, you know, fast, I was trying to write down.
Literacy specialist.
Literacy specialist. And so, my question is, I know it's early still in the school year and it just, you know, has been implemented recently, but I was curious as to your opinions as to how that's going with as far as instruction for our children in the classroom. Do you feel that it's been a, a big help with that?
Yes, we have 2 literacy specialists at Edwards and it has been tremendous. I really love the model because we pull out 3rd grade for our Read to Achieve students. So, we're able to get 17 students that were really struggling, really much more intensive instruction. So far, their work samples have really shown that they're making a lot of growth and they have more than a year's worth of growth ground to cover. So, I really have felt positive, that was a positive move for how we're spending our money to add those positions in. And again, we have 2 and the other one at Edwards this year is working more specifically with 4th and 5th grades as well. What I'm finding a lot of times is our children are, are very good readers, but once they get to that showing what they know and showing that comprehension, and we serve a lot of English language learners as well, they struggle with the academic vocabulary and just putting that knowledge out. So, really being able to utilize different strategies is always great when kids can hear stuff from more than 1 person because they have different styles. So, that gives them another person to build a relationship with and teach with. So, and I feel like I can speak for the group in that we were really excited to keep them this year and want to move forward with that. Every, and who has 2? I was going to say, so a lot of the schools even decided if they wanted to do 1 or 2 based on their needs. So, I think that spoke volumes when we made the transition, if they had 1 to add 2 or whatnot as well, so.
And what about the tutors and the AIG?
We all do tutors a little differently and that's pretty much a site-based decision based on the feedback from the principal administration team and the teachers. We all primarily use them in ELA. I know some of the folks use them in math as well, but of course, funding is always getting cut and so, when we have to prioritize things, our top priority is our literacy instruction to really be able to run small group instruction every day. We do our reading blocks K-5 every day. With the tutors, of course, we love to find folks that are certified and teachers that want to come back if they're retired and start out, you know, giving back in that way in a part-time capacity. But we hire folks that are, you know, best highly qualified as we can find. They have to have college degrees and some level of, you know, meet all those requirements. So, it's, you know, folks, the folks that are going in there are high-quality folks. And with the tutors, it really makes a difference. When you think of an 8-year-old and 1 person per 24 kids, it makes a difference when you can cut that ratio to 1 to 12. So, the tutors have been really important for our instructional delivery.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you all. I'd like to ask our, Frank, we made the transition with the middle schools? And as we're making this transition here, I just want to let you all know, I told everybody try to keep it to 15 minutes tonight. Everybody gets a little passionate about what they're doing, so just bear with us here. We'll, I know everybody will, I think it's great, whatever you want to go into with detail or anything, so. Shannon?
I'm Shannon Shuey, I'm the principal at Eastly Middle School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. One of the fabulous things about living in Lee County is the school board and the school administration, very much so, as you saw with the elementary schools. We have proved, we have all proven ourselves both willing to and capable not for settling for ordinary education for our children, but despite for all the challenges, we managed to keep the community feeling and I think that's a very important part of our schools. And we are always looking for rich academic opportunities for our students, whether that's before school, during school, after school, and even on the weekends. The middle school principals would like to take tonight as an opportunity to speak to all of you about the ways in which we cultivate success in our schools. We believe that these 4 things are the pillars of our success and our continual growth and things that we're continuing to work on to improve our growth in academics at our school. Those are, of course, organization, motivation of our students and staff, college and career readiness, and research-based and data-proven practices. At the middle school level, we feel that management of time and learning to set priorities can make a difference between success and failure for our students. This year, all 3 middle schools have implemented the school agendas. We use that as a parent communication tool, but also a student organizational tool in which they come in in the morning, they write down the things that they need. One of the best things is that students go home, they have 1 agenda that everyone, we have given them, and it is really a tool for management and, like I said, for that parent communication. Each one of our schools use it a little different with parent communication. Eastly Middle Schools use a stamping system for any behavior, homework concerns, as well as documenting their grades. And I do know that each middle school has their parents check in on those agendas. And that helps the students not only organize, but also knows that we are having constant communication with the parents. And so, that's one of the new things that we are trying this year. We are also implementing binders, very similar to what the elementary schools had stated, very much so in the Avid format with the dividers. And again, really seeking out that organization so that when they go home, they have everything that they need, all of their notes, all of their homework and things to make them successful. We are also implementing goal-setting. That's individual student goal-setting in which students set their goals for achievement. They say, alright, I'm not an A student, but I can strive to be that B student. And they have progress monitoring along the way. It can be as simple as they're looking at their grade overall. It can be a smaller goal, maybe an AR, Accelerator Reader goal, whatever they feel that they need to work on to make them more, more of a successful student. And then, of course, we use graphic organizers in the classroom and one of the big focuses this year is- And then, of course, we use graphic organizers in the classroom, and one of the big focuses this year is school-wide implementation of Cornell notes.
Good evening. My name's Natalie Warren, and I'm actually the assistant principal at Sandley Middle. Ms. Bridges had an obligation tonight, so I'm standing in for her, so bear with me. Um, motivation, one of the things we know is a big obstacle in the middle school is motivation for our students. So, at the middle school level, we've implemented several strategies to try to overcome this obstacle. One would be the advisory-advisee program, and what that is, is basically just to provide another adult in the building for the student to make a connection with, for the student to build a relationship with, someone other than their teacher. Whether this be a club sponsor, an athletic coach, you know, a guidance counselor, anywhere that they can make a connection with another adult other than their teacher. Another thing, goal setting, Ms. Shuey kind of touched on that already, but it is a way for the students to kind of self-assess. They can assess where they are, what they're doing, where they want to be, and this advisor-advisee can touch on that, look at their goals, whether it be short-term or long-term. Power school access for students and parents. Students are able to get in, see their grades, see their scores, see what they're missing, they're missing assignments, another way for them to self-regulate and self-assess where they are. But also, the parent portal piece, where parents can access it. At the middle school level, we've really tried to think out of the box to get our parents on this. We've offered parent portal stations at athletic games, at after-school events. We have one set up in our front office, just so anytime we can access parents to say, hey, sign up for this parent portal. This is a way to help your students, you can see what their grades are, what they're doing, and kind of stay on top of that. The other thing we are doing is during-school and then after-school activities and clubs. These clubs are, just offer a wide variety of opportunities for our children. Our goal is to find something for these middle school students to connect with, to sink into school with, whatever it be, or whatever it looked like. Something to motivate them. So, we offer a wide variety of activities and clubs, everything from running split clubs to drama clubs, to acting, just anything to engage the students. Public acknowledgements, we're really trying to focus on celebrating our children and their success. We're acknowledging them via websites, through social media, anytime they have an achievement or if it's their behavior or recognition, anything like that, we're just trying to celebrate the success of our students. Academic support, at the middle school level, we're offering after-school tutoring, and we're so thankful to have the funding to do this. And within this after-school tutoring, we're providing transportation. And as you know, that puts all of our children on an equal playing ground. That helps knock down the barriers that would make our children not have access to this after-school tutoring. So, we're being able to provide bus transportation, and that allows equal opportunity for all of our students to receive these extra services. In the middle school, we're really trying to value our students and give them a student voice. How are we doing this? Well, we're offering student surveys to kind of get their feedback, and then we're acting upon it. Not just here, do this survey. Let's take it, and let's see what we can do with it. We have online request forms, online counselor request forms, online, like the old suggestion box, now we have it online. Our children can access it all the time. They can fill it out anonymously, or they can leave who they are. We respect their confidentiality. They can offer suggestions, comments, and you'd be shocked. They're children, but they have better suggestions than we do as adults. Their perspective is a little different lens than ours, so we're trying to value their voice and how they feel. Finally, with motivation, we're looking at parent involvement and communication. As the elementary schools spoke on the parent involvement, we at the middle school know that that's a pivotal piece of the student's success. We're utilizing Blackboard Connect as a way to call our parents and send out messages. All the middle schools are using some form of a text alert, whether it's Remind 101 or Selly, some way to alert parents with text notifications. Our social media is Twitter, it's Instagram, it's Facebook, and with the parents, we're really reaching out via Facebook because our students have kind of left off of that, but we're still trying to reach our students through Instagram and things like that that they're interested in. Power school, I'd already mentioned the parent portal stations, but another way to increase that parent involvement communication, just want our parents informed. We want to make them aware of what we're doing and have them informed so they can be involved as well. The next big thing we're trying at the middle schools is college and career readiness. What we're trying to do is just create a culture of preparedness for college and careers. Whatever that looks like for the individual child, we want them to be prepared. Whatever their college is, whatever their career is, we want them to have the skill set to be successful in that. And so, we're offering many opportunities. With that is field trips. We're letting our students tour college campuses. All of our eighth graders at all the middle schools go to CCCC and see our local community college. This just gives them those experiences. They may have never seen a college campus. Their parents may have never had. This allows them that experience and opens their eyes to the opportunities that are out there for. Whatever it is, just exposure. We know in middle school, it's that time to tap into that interest and find their skill set. Career days and guest speakers, we're reaching out to our communities, getting our community leaders in or our community volunteers to come in and speak about their career, what it took for them to get their career, what does college look like, what preparation did they have to have? And then, the career, what skill set they have in that career, the success they've had and how they've achieved that. We do guest speakers in our classrooms, with our clubs, with our activities. Our career days, we all host at the middle school and invite just a variety of people in to just share the whole gamut full of career opportunities. Again, exposure and saturation for our children, just to show them there's no closed door. Any opportunity is open for them. The school culture, as I said, we're just trying to saturate it. If you come in, you'll see pennants hanging, you will see college boards in every classroom, in our hallways. And these college boards, we've got information on scholarships and tuition and applications, just what that is. Already just putting that in our children's brain and our parents, so when our parents are there, they see what we're trying to create. And then, career-focused electives. Our elective classes at the middle school do center around careers. We have a STEM lab, we have a career exploration lab, we have an intro to biotech, we have ag science, we have computer and entrepreneurship, I mean, just a wide variety of electives that all can center around varied careers. And this, again, just letting them see a little bit of everything, so hopefully the students can find their knack, find their interests, another way to sink in at the middle school level. Another big skill we're doing is our research-based and data-proven best practices. These best practice strategies that you see listed here are research-based, they are proven to be successful, and we're implementing them with fidelity at the middle school level. We're all just trying to use the best practices and the best strategies that we know will reach our children. So, with that said, our lead teachers. I'm glad you asked the elementary. I wanted to jump out of my seat and say, well, at the middle school, we are, our lead teachers, we, I can speak for the group when I say we are so thankful. We are utilizing them, and we've hit the ground running with them since the workdays back in August. The ELA lead teacher, our math lead teacher, and even our Avid district teacher. I, we are calling on them, they are in our PLCs, they're at our staff meetings, they're leading professional developments, they're providing resources, even as an administrator. I've sent an email and said, hey, I need, and within minutes, I've got a reply and ten things right at my fingertips. It's just that extra resource, that extra support that's solely focused on instruction and curriculum. And these master teachers have been in the trenches, so they can share with our teachers in conjunction with us the strategies that we know are working. WICOR, you heard elementary mention that. It is an Avid strategy. It's writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading, and we're using WICOR for a purpose. This purpose is to increase the rigor and relevance in instruction, and we are seeing it with, at success. It's in our lesson plans, we're seeing it carried out in our observations. Professional learning communities, that's our time where our teachers collaborate with one another, and that's when they can learn from each other. They're learning from their professional colleagues. This is a time where they share activities and strategies, they dig into these standards, they look at alignment. That's all these conversations, and it's all geared around instruction and learning from one another. And our lead teachers are in these, and they're offering different insights and ideas and just expanding. And these are growing, and we really believe they are working. You've heard the cliche, you know, three brains are better than one, and that's the concept of it. All of them coming together to serve our children. Common assessments, we're doing our district benchmarks, as well as at the school level, we're creating common assessments, unit tests, common assessments on each standards there, each set of standards, and they are common for the grade level and the subject area. And then, we're comparing the data with them. We're not just giving common assessments. We're taking it back and doing item analysis and saying, what skills did they not get? What skills did they get? How are we going to reteach that? How are we going to assure they get it? So, these conversations are real and beneficial, and we're seeing the results in our data with our children. Classroom walkthroughs with feedback. At the middle school level, we all have the opportunity to use through Google Drive a classroom walkthrough form. We go in, and these walkthroughs aren't formal observations, but they are documented, and it's a way to give feedback. It's a way to grow our children. It's an informal way to pop in, to know what's going on, give a little feedback, grow our teachers, which will in turn grow our children, and that's the goal of it there. You know, I, I looked at some of that data before I come in, and, and last year alone, the Advent team did over three hundred and two informal classroom walkthroughs. So, that just kind of lets you know, being in those classrooms, seeing what's going on and giving that feedback. Professional development, our district is offering professional development, Avid, PSYOP, AIG, that we are so thankful for. And at the school level, we're offering professional development. Our staff meetings are no longer what you may think of with staff meetings. On Wednesday, we're going to have, they're not announcements. They are true learning and growing. And what we do is we take our walkthrough data, and we see what trends are we noticing? Where do our teachers need support? And that's our job and our responsibility to provide that to them. And as administrators, we're doing it, and then we're calling on our lead teachers to help us do that as well. Teacher support, again, lead teachers, our beginning teacher program, our district lead that helps with that, our beginning teacher specialist and the program that they have to support them, is helping. As administrators, we're going in and modeling lessons or teaching lessons, but we're going in and offering that support to our teachers as well. That is our job. We are instructional leaders, and that's where we see our role, is to grow our teachers and give them feedback. We all have room to grow and to improve. Lesson plans, lesson plans, we're making sure they're aligned with the standards. We're making sure they're rigorous, they're relevant, they're including these WICOR strategies. We want to see these best practice strategies implemented consistently in our classrooms. And then, updating of instructional materials. Our district is, is hearing us and responding, and we're so thankful. I could speak for all of us. We, we hear science textbooks are coming, and the district said, we hear you, they're coming. And so, we're looking forward to new science textbooks and updated science textbooks. We have a lot of online programs that our district continues to support, and then there's some we support at the school level as well. Mr. Marshall's kind of going to go in details more on that, but we are thankful for the support that you give us and the resources that you allow for us.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Elvin Marshall, principal at Wesley Middle School. And then, first, began by just saying, thank you. This particular screen that you see, it tells us about our supplemental programs, and talk about how we deliver these programs. Let me tell you that, again, thank you for the support of the technology in this district. I've been at Wesley now going into my seventh year. Hardly spent that long. As you say, time flies when you're having fun, and I can say that I've enjoyed my time at Wesley, mostly because of the technology that we have, that surrounding districts cannot speak on the same level that we can when it comes to the technology. That's the way of the future. Our students are engaged much stronger in our classrooms because of these great programs that is funded by the district. Starts with Achieve 3000, Eat Science. That's a great reading program, and we talk about growth and sustaining growth and beginning to get kids in the direction that we want them to go. These programs, Achieve 3000, and I, my colleagues may speak more of it if I miss anything. It's a tremendous database of nonfiction reading material. First of all, all of these programs began with some type of self-assessment, some type of pre-assessment to determine where our kids are. And if we're trying to improve reading, it's good to know where our kids are at the starting point. And each day and each week that goes by that our kids are engaged in these programs, it tells us whether or not our kids are getting it, and if our kids are developing in the area where we want them to. Accelerated Reader, Read 180, again, all of these are strong reading programs that we have. We have a number of them, but not one program is going to be suffice for all of our students. So, some of these programs are great for the really low students, and some of these programs are great for those students that we want to continue to challenge and get as much growth out of those students in the areas of reading. Discovery Ed is an online textbook for science. We have science textbooks, but we've not lost Discovery Ed. Key Ed, Edmodo, and I believe Fuhu, may not be with Wes, that's the first one I heard of, of one of the other middle schools using it. But these are ideal programs that our teachers use to deliver instruction. The one thing I take the most pride in, if I have an opportunity to take a teacher candidate that's here for an interview, is to take that teacher throughout our classroom. The first thing that blows their mind is that every student has a laptop, every classroom has a smartboard, and those students are deeply engaged. And that's one of the best-selling points for any district when we're competing against surrounding districts to get the best quality teachers. IXL, and I apologize if it's cut off, IXL and Excel are the reading and the high school and middle grades-level math online programs. Want also increase our math, we've got a lot of work, at least I know at Wesley, that we need to do to increase our student performance and increase student growth. Those are ideal programs that our teachers are using with fidelity, and again, it produces relevant data that our teachers can use to determine whether or not our kids are getting it. Last, SchoolNet and Study Island. SchoolNet is a component through DPI. Study Island is one of the components that we use to deliver our benchmark testing that takes place every nine-week grading period. We have benchmarks stemming up in another week or so, so that's going to be the first common assessment from one middle school to another to determine whether or not our kids are on the level where we want them. And it gives teachers a great point to reflect to and go back and, and reteach if necessary. That's one thing I did in the classroom as a teacher. If I didn't fill, most of my students got most of the area that we're on in our pacing guide. You have to go back and reteach, because if you don't do it, you're not going to have the important foundations to do well on the end of grade and course test at the end of the year. And last thing I want to say about that is, again, it's all about growth, but we need this data that can give us quick information and quick feedback that our teachers can use from one day to the next. The frameworks, we haven't gotten away from. You heard a lot about Avid this evening. The one thing I wanted to mention, because we really haven't gotten away from the significance of it, but making middle grades work is a powerful component. I can say at Wesley, we are taking part in the seven habits of highly effective people. We would love to embrace the Leader in Me component, but it is somewhat costly, and it is a deep level commitment that, to be honest with you, they would prefer that we really look and educate our staff on it. And so far, the elementary schools have done a tremendous job. Ingram did a great job, came over to Wesley and hearing from their staff to our staff, the components of Leader in Me, how does it look on a middle grades level? The good news, Dr. Bryant, if I can, and Board Chair Dr. Smith, is that if our middle school was to go in this direction, I believe that in this part of North Carolina, we would be the first middle school, I believe, to really embrace it. I asked, are there other middle schools that are already doing the Leader in Me component? And the one middle school they mentioned that's worth visiting is a middle school in Kentucky. I don't think I can get my staff on the bus and drive me to Kentucky and back, but I want us to look at this with a lot more seriousness. And our staff right now, they feel very comfortable, at least starting with some of And our staff right now, they feel very comfortable, at least starting with some of the, uh, components of it, which starts with the seven habits of highly effective people. Actually, it's seven habits of highly effective teams, which is the middle school component of that. We have not gotten away from PBIS, which is our Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Program. Uh, we are looking at those students, uh, who also need the support through PSYOP. These are our ELL, our English Language, our students, the ones who are limited in English. Also do not want to get away from our commitment to STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. When I first got to Wesley, seven years ago, we had the pleasure of visiting a middle school in Baltimore, Maryland, Michael Phelps, the Olympic swimmer, his mother, his principal at this particular middle school. And I was, I was just flabbergasted with a lot of great things that the school actually implemented. And the first thing I said is, I wanna bring this back to Wesley. And I'm proud to say that we are starting some very recognizable, uh, things at Wesley that I think I can say that I got from this middle school that middle grade C and I, that we have scheduled, I believe, on October twenty eighth, I believe, that, uh, we are hosting at Wesley, I'll get a chance to show you some of that. So, uh, we don't wanna get away from any of these components and any of these frameworks because the basis of it is building those meaningful relationships with our students, engaging our students. And those students that we're talking about getting the most out of them for growth are those students that somewhat feel disconnected with our school. And unfortunately, somewhat disconnected with teachers and administrators. And dealing with that battle every single day as administrators. And a lot of times, parents do not know how to handle some of those students at home life. And they kinda look at us and look at schools as a fix-all. But the one thing we can do is impress on our students that this is something that we cannot take for granted. Education is a key. But we have to do more than that. We have to put our arms around our young people. And we have to show them that this is not only something that's good for them, but that we care about them enough, that we want to make sure that we're taking care of them whole chat, not just the curriculum aspect of things, the crew in the whole chat. And I thank all of these, particularly Avid. But we had a lot of students who spoke about it, changed their lives literally. Not just their lives, but it also changed members of their families. So I'm proud to say that I can hold myself up as a type of student who would benefit from Avid. No one in my family ever attended a four-year college. My mother was a high school dropout and I was a subpar student in school. And I often had to remind my students of my story personally. And that is, you know, when I was in middle school in your age, there were teachers who did not think that I would probably grow up and ever be where I'm at today. And would you know, the very first school I was principal at, three of those teachers were on my staff. And I told those students, if you don't think you can do it, you change that perception, that attitude. Believe in yourself that you can do it, besides face it. I was where you are. One day, you may be the boss of those teachers here. One day, I may be working for you. That concludes the presentation this evening. Thank you so much for your support. And I believe this is the part where we can entertain questions if anyone has.
I don't have any of those.
Thank you. Frank will make the shift for the high schools. I'd like to thank the middle school administrators. Appreciate your presentation.
I'm Kenna Wilson, the principal at Lee County High School. And, and I'll just reiterate what my colleagues and the other grade levels have said. Thank you for taking the time to hear us tonight about this. We're very proud of all the things that we're doing. And our high schools are all very different, uh, but we're really proud of the things, um, that we're doing, um, our students are doing, our teachers are doing, that we're doing. And there's a lot of commonality in that because we do all align with our district's vision of providing our students with more than just a diploma. Um, and we do, um, when we met to discuss this presentation, Mr. Beal, who couldn't be here with us tonight, um, titled it Drive for Growth, because we're looking for growth. We understand the urgency for improving growth scores as measured by our state. Uh, but we're also so proud of all the growth that we see every day, um, in the work that happens in our schools. So, um, I will go ahead and introduce Mr. Dawsonbach.
Good evening. As, uh, Ms. Wilson said, I'm Chris Dawsonbach, principal at Southernly High School. And, uh, what I'm gonna talk about tonight, and I wanna try to connect everything that I'm gonna talk about back to growth. We're gonna begin with professional development. Because while I think it's important to grow our kids, I think it's not just as important that we grow the adults in the building, having contact with those kids each day. And I think one of the things that Lee County needs to be proud of is the professional development opportunities that we offer, uh, to our teachers. And a side note, we often have a lot of relatively newer teachers that are very impressed with the fact that we want to invest in them. Uh, there are a lot of districts that, um, have a reputation of just sending those veteran teachers and just sending those that have been in it a while. But I think it's important that everybody, uh, be given that opportunity. And I think that's something that we should be proud of. Uh, we're very proud to have coaches. As a lot of folks have mentioned tonight, we're working very closely with our math coach and our English coach. Um, we also have a lot of trainings within the district. Um, as a matter of fact, we have an, uh, avid group coming in tomorrow to all of the high schools. Uh, we do a lot with PSYOP, a lot with Avid, a lot with AIG, and a lot on developing vocabulary and literacy skills. Uh, we've also had the opportunity to, uh, attend a lot of summer conferences. And what we, um, are so proud of is we're able to send folks off and they're able to come back and train those that are unable to go. So I think it is an investment that's worthwhile when you can bring that back to the building because everybody, we don't have the funds to send everybody in the building. Uh, we do have monthly Avid trainings to keep everybody, um, kind of in line with what we're doing. In fact, we have one tomorrow in the district here at Lee County High School. Uh, we also do various book studies at different schools. And I think that's important just because everybody needs to speak a common language. Everybody needs to be on the same page. Uh, it's very difficult to get a student to grow if we each have a different point of view on how we're going to do that. Uh, we also have a lot of outside folks that come in, uh, within CAT, Avid, uh, North Carolina New Schools and DPI. We've done a lot of work with them over the past year just to align the curriculum and to ensure that what we're doing in the classroom is beneficial. Uh, because oftentimes, I, I speak to teachers and say, you, you can be teaching this subject, but you can oftentimes be wasting a student's time if what you're teaching is not on grade level and not aligned to the curriculum. So I think we have a lot to be proud of with professional development. We have a long way to go, but I think as long as we keep growing our teachers, our students will also continue to grow.
Meet again. Um, I, I want to speak to Avid. Again, this is, I think you can see a common theme across all grade levels, which is so good for high school principals to hear tonight because, um, of the power of Avid. Um, Avid, um, again, the district-wide Avid implementation, we believe strongly, will have, uh, an impact, a long-term impact on student growth and achievement at, at all levels, including high school. Um, Avid having, um, the strong emphasis on WICER. Um, these are all research-based instructional strategies that have shown to increase student achievement and also shown to have, um, a higher retention rate for students who leave high school and go to college. Um, there is recent research showing that Avid does that for students who leave high school after having the benefit of Avid, that they stay in college longer than a student who did not have Avid. So as high school principals, we're very serious about that. Um, we have Avid site coordinators at each of our high schools to help us with that implementation. Uh, we also are fortunate to have, again, an avid teacher in the district, an avid lead teacher, who has, um, facilitated district collaboration. Um, and we have walkthroughs led by that coach and also Avid coming in and doing that. And I think we all would agree that that increases accountability and fidelity of Avid in all of our classrooms, um, and the implementation. Again, it's so important as we're looking at growing our students that we are accountable and we do look for fidelity in, in, in making sure those programs are being done. Um, we also have access, we're very fortunate to have school libraries, um, that have, um, these research-based strategies within them to support our professional development that Mr. Dawsonbach spoke of. Um, we also have access to Avid Weekly, um, and this is a resource across all content areas. And this is, this is because of the resources that you have supported and provided for us. Um, we feel like the Avid integration is an umbrella that supports all of the amazing initiatives that are making an impact on students in Lee County at the high school level, including academies, uh, the, the new IB Diploma Program, um, at Lee County High School. There's a CTE expansion at all of our schools, including Brag Street Academy at the high school level. Um, and also, it supports advisory. And we'll talk a little bit more about advisory as we proceed.
Don't worry about you, Long.
I'm sorry. Good evening. I'm Jolanda Jordan, principal of Brag Street Academy. And I'm gonna share with you some of the things that we're doing, uh, at the high school level on instructional support. Um, at the high school level, we feel that it's important that all of our teachers have the skills, the capacity, and the resources that they need to work with our students in the classroom to deliver, design and deliver quality instructional educational experiences. Um, some of the things that we do have in place is the beginning teacher support at each school. All of the schools have, um, site-based mentors to work with our teachers. Um, we have budding systems where our stu-, um, teachers can peer, observe each other, and then communicate with each other. We also have, um, let's see, ways and processes for our staff to give, solicit feedback and also give feedback. So there's processes in place that if they're struggling with something, they can reach out to the peer or to administration and work with them on that, um, particular issue that they're having. Because it's important that we give our teachers the support they need so that we can maintain our teachers. We have the, um, also the district-wide be- beginning teacher program where they work with the beginning teachers, years one through three on different levels. So they'll meet monthly, um, or bi-monthly depending upon what year they're in and they're, um, teaching for Lee County schools. As Mr. Dawsonbach stated earlier, we have opportunities for all of our teachers to experience professional development, uh, whether they're their first-year teacher, whether they're mid-career, or whether they're veterans. And with the, uh, professional development that we provide across the high schools, it's embedded. So it's not just a one-time workshop, it's continuous on the same topic so that it can be, um, not only learned, but practiced and then hopefully instituted. Um, with the colleague-to-colleague walkthroughs, we do it across the school, but also with Bragg because we are such a small setting, we do it across the district. So we'll visit other schools in the district and just kinda have that support for what's going on within the district and the things that we're doing that we can share and the things that the other schools are doing that, that we can receive back from them. With, um, Mr. Dawsonbach mentioned earlier, the professional learning communities, we have that at each campus and each campus addresses the special needs of that, um, their campus. So for instance, at Brag Street, we focus a lot on resiliency and working with this population that we're working with in order to build about teachers to make sure that they can handle not only the instruction, but also the behavior issues that we have in the classrooms as well. And, um, we are thrilled. I know the elementary level mentioned it, the middle school level mentioned it. We are thrilled to have the coaches back in the district. Um, the instructional coaches for, uh, math and language arts are coming into our schools. And we also have the PSYOP coach working with us, working with our students that are ESL. But not, not only just the students that are ESL, but the students that just demonstrate, uh, skill deficits in academic language. And so that helps our students and our teachers to work with those students. So we're grateful to have that from the district this year. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to you.
I don't think you can talk about accountability, uh, with growth without talking about accountability. And I think it's very important, uh, that we talk about the data. I think it's important that we be able to prove what we're doing is working. And if it's not, we need to be willing to make a change. Uh, so one of the things I wanna talk about is that accountability. Uh, we have benchmarks that we are using. And what we have found that works is in the past, we've done, uh, mid-semester or midterm benchmarks, but we found that it's more beneficial. Uh, one of the things we're working on this year is to do shorter benchmarks more often throughout the year because it's very difficult to wait and see that the student is struggling, uh, at the midway point of the semester. That's way too late. Uh, so we've worked very closely with our coaches, as a lot of people have mentioned, uh, to ensure that our benchmarks are aligned. We have also, uh, used programs such as USA, USA Test Prep and Case Twenty-One that have been vetted to ensure that they also align to the standards, uh, for North Carolina courses. So we have used those benchmarks and, uh, that's going to drive remediation and enrichment. And an important word I think that's in there is enrichment. I think oftentimes, we talk about accountability and we talk about just the kids that don't do so well on the test. But we also want to make sure we're using this for those kids that also do well, but we want to do better. Because if a student is in the eighty-fifth percentile, then my expectation would be the next time they're in the ninetieth percentile. And even though they're successful. So we wanna make sure we're hitting, uh, the remediation and the enrichment of, of students. And we wanna use the results from those benchmarks to drive that. Uh, we're also doing ACT preparation. We're doing it differently in the schools, but that is integrated daily. Um, at some schools, uh, we're using it a lot through teachers as advisors. And as, uh, there have been programs created before and after school for students to come in and get ACT, um, help because those are scores that we also want to see improve. We're also doing a lot of data analysis, uh, with professional learning communities and with school leadership teams. Uh, to talk a little bit about professional learning communities, we have tried across the high schools to as much as possible have common planning among our content teachers, meaning that all math teachers, all English teachers, science, social studies have the same common planning. Because I think it's important, uh, that they be able to go next door and talk about what worked, uh, what didn't work, um, and get tips. So we're working very hard in those professional learning communities. And speaking of the benchmarks, once those results come back, it is our expectation that they sit in a room with their colleagues, uh, they share the scores and they be willing to have the conversations, even the tough conversations, about what to do if things don't go well. Uh, just to give you an example of, of one that we've recently done, we had a math three group uh, that took a benchmark. One teacher had a standard, the students performed wonderfully. Uh, another teacher, they struggled. Uh, they decided they taught during the same class period, so they just switched students. And one taught a standard they were strong in, the other taught a standard they were, uh, they were also strong in. So it's, it's, uh, data like that that allows us to make these instructional decisions. Um, and also, we have to make sure that data is driving the decisions of our master schedule. Um, a master schedule is a bear in and of itself, but having the common planning, strategically placing courses that are being taught certain times of the day, uh, statistically does have a benefit on students. Um, also, we found that certain year-long classes for students to struggle instead of giving them the instruction in one semester, stretching it over the course of the year. And again, we need data to prove all of that and we need data to prove that all of that has worked.
And that leads to talking about our students, of course. Um, said we get back to the advisory programs. Um, we all have advisory programs that are aligned with the high schools at work model um, that we have been, um, using for many years. However, we've all been each year making improvements to that. Um, it, it, as high school students, I know that the middle school spoke about connections, but the connections are so important certainly on our larger campuses as well. Advisor, advisee provides ways for kids' issues, not only, um, social, uh, but also academic performance issues to be monitored and addressed very quickly so that an advisor may see something because they're, they're tasked with monitoring i- in addition to their stu-, the students, teachers, counselors, and administrators. Um, so, so having that advisor, advisee connection and having them loop through with the student each year um, has, is really a support for the student academically as well as socially. Um, the benefits are varied. And in that advisory, lesson plans are differentiated, um, according to student needs. So depending on your grade level, you may have lesson plans related to ACT prep. Um, you may have the freshmen talking about their transition to high school. You, of course, college pathways are discussed each year. Um, and, and you'd be surprised how many high school students just need support in understanding what a transcript means, need support in understanding those things. And all those things are directly related to accountability, as Chris said, in the high school. Um, you know, and having those difficult conversations as we talk about growth at the high school level, we know the focus, um, needs to be put on EOC courses and, and having that growth, um, not just with the kids like Chris referred to, that are typically not successful on tests, but at all levels with all subgroups. So you'll see at each of our high schools that we have allocated additional resources to provide support for biology, math, and English to students. And not just the students who you would typically see needing remediation, but students at all levels. So that we're hoping to see a significant increase in the needs of students at every level. So we're offering availability, um, to tutoring and support, um, for students at every level honors to the students who are really struggling. Um, and I think you go back to those courses that are typically seen as freshman-level courses, um, well, actually sophomore courses, but a lot of our freshmen have been in. Um, we are really, it continue to work on that transition from middle school to high school. And at each of our schools, you'll find transition programs from bridge programs at the Lee Early College to orientations that are offered at our high schools to support a ninth, an eighth grader moving to ninth grade. Um, and it, and if you look at those EOC courses, um, our students are taking those at a, at a time where they're just trying to get used to being in high school. Um, so we feel like those transition programs and that support is So we feel like those transition programs and that support is very important. So, thank you, and let us know if you have any questions.
Actually, I do have questions for this, for the high school group.
Please ma'am.
Talking, going back to the, any of you that would like to answer, that's fine. Talking, going back to the benchmarks that was on the two slides before, like I said with the elementary school group, I know it's still early, you know, in the school year, but do you feel that the benchmarks have helped as far as helping students in the classroom with instruction, you know, to see where they need help with and be able to move the curriculum to what the need is to help the students individually? Have you seen, have you seen how that work?
I think they have, yes. I think if nothing else, they provide valuable data for us to be able to see where we are.
Right.
So I think they have been helpful. I think it's been helpful to have an expert in the coaches to be able to come in and say, "This is a good question," or "This is not aligned to standard," or "This is a bad question." And I think it's also been beneficial that the teachers have had a voice in being able to help create these too, because that's, that's a whole nother beast in and of itself at the high school level is getting that buy-in from teachers so that they feel valued and they feel the test is valid. So yes, I do think they're right.
Okay, good. So it's been a good tool to be able to help the students as far as kind of gauge where they are and be able to-
And just to reiterate what Chris is saying, when you're, when you're giving a common assessment and you're doing it in a way that's aligned, and you're giving teachers input and voice, you're also able to look at those results and really drill down to the individual student. And again, when you're looking at a high school student and a high school curriculum, that's, it's important for any student, but I think that that's the next step as we look at really supporting the growth of student at all levels. And I think Chris mentioned that earlier, if you come in at the eighty-fifth percentile, we want you to come in at the higher percentile the next year. So it's not just remembering the kids where we're mediating, but it's being able to, those assessments, those benchmarks and common assessments, give us a way to drill down to that individual student.
Thank you. And my next question is about the tutorials for the EOC courses. Do you feel that they've been helpful as far as helping students with, you know, what they need help with as far as understanding the content better in the curriculum?
The tutorials have, have, and you can speak to the tutorials at your sites, at Lee County High School, we've had tutorials, we have ramped up the tutorials this year. And October twenty-second will be the first time we've offered the after-school that's kind of ramped up and all. And we often have students that are taking not just one of those EOCs, they're taking more than one of those EOCs in a semester. So we're really looking at new ways to deliver that. But yes, you know, we've offered support on Saturdays before school, after school, and tutorials, obviously, making sure, again, going back to the word aligned and targeted and strategic, and making sure we're looking at data to be sure that we're supporting students, yes.
Okay, and so you're getting good feedback from the students with-
Yes, we have, we have a high percentage that have said they're going to participate.
Okay, good.
At Bragg Street, what we're doing is the, we're embedding tutorials throughout the day. In the past, we used to do them after school, and we found that transportation was an issue, and also just the behavior, because we had less staff at that time of day. And so now we do the tutorials within the school day, and we try to do it one-on-one for the particular student needs. And so, like I said, we're trying it this year for the first time to make sure that we give them it and give it to them while we have them there at school.
Is it working out well so far?
So far, it's working really well.
As far as Southern, similar to Ms. Wilson, we've had some teachers stay after school with the official tutorials beginning the last week in October. We waited because this year we want to offer specific afternoons for specific standards and concepts, so in order to get the data that we needed to see which students need to stay and should stay, we decided to wait until the last week in October.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question. My question is, I'm interested in all grade from the elementary school to the high school. Is what we're, is what we're teaching from the elementary school to the high school because it's foundational and we're building, we have a building block. Is everything aligning together? We are aligning everything together to make sure that when they get from elementary school to middle school, because they are aligned together, that when we get to high school, we don't have anything that surprises us? Do we get, I'm saying this as high school teachers to you guys, the kids that you get, they are, some of them are taking maybe algebra in middle school. When they come to you, how is everything aligning together with what you're doing so that when these kids are being tested on fundamentals and foundational things, that they are not lacking in anything?
I think that, again, Chris mentioned something earlier about common, commonality and common language, and if, and if we look at Lee County schools as a district, and I think if nothing else from you take, if, 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 nothing else anybody can take on tonight, it's that we are, as an administrative team, aligned from pre-K to twenty-two, looking at Ms. Allen at Floyd Knight. Because you can see the initiatives that, that we are talking about and presenting, these things will build in our building, and we have seen benefit from those things. When you hear them talk about leader in me, and even how a kindergartner is assessed, so when they get there, they already know what their skill, you know, skill deficits are, so they don't have to waste that time. I mean, you're, all those things, Avid, you're seeing Avid implemented across the district at every level. And we haven't, I mean, some of these things will take time, but we see benefits from the students who have participated in those things as opposed to those who have not. I think my colleagues would, would agree. So I think all of us standing here are just, as high school principals, I'm thrilled to hear that I'm going to have students come to me that have learned organizational skills, who have discovered the leader that they can be, who, whose skill deficits have been addressed early on, so that when they come to me, again, we continue to push. You heard from, from pre-K to high school tonight, people talking about alignment, people talking about collaboration, and looking at data. And, and again, at the high school level, you know, having those tough conversations with our teachers and each other and saying what has worked and what hasn't worked. And, you know, we talked about the ways we're doing that, and some of the changes that we've put into place to make sure we, we, I hope that answered your question. Did you-
Just to answer your question briefly, yes, I do see an improvement. I think I would misspeak if I didn't say we have some work to do in regards to literacy as far as reading and Lexile levels, but we are working on that. I know Dr. Warren is working closely with the high schools with that and also the middle schools. We're also using a program aligned now to Lexiles, and it meets a student where they are. And if they use it consistently, it's called Achieve 3000, their Lexile score is shown to go up, and it's very differentiated per student. If Ms. Wilson and I both took a pre-test, we would both start with very different levels if we were different types of learners, but by the end, it's to get everybody at the same level. One of the things, and I don't want this to be looked at as, as lip service, but I think one of the things that we are doing is the soft skills, because I don't think it matters if we're teaching to the curriculum, if we're teaching to standards, if we get students at the high school, middle school level that don't understand respect and responsibility and leadership. So I do think we're doing a better job of that, which is allowing us to be able to teach them.
Another, a second question that I have, do we have anything, you guys, all of the teachers can answer this question? Like, something like, because a lot of kids come from different homes and families, do we have a way where we can teach some of these kids study skills? I know that's our job, you know? Kids who are going to high school from middle school, they have, is there a way we can teach them the study skills? I'm just putting that out there whereby, you know, you go to some colleges, you see kids who are taught college study skills. Do we have the study skills that we can put in place? I'm not, it's not anything against our school system, I'm just saying, do we have something that we can do to help these kids with the study?
I think we're all saying the same thing at the same time, Avid. Avid.
What I was going to say is, one of the components of Avid is the organizational skills, and I think all the schools started out with that goal of the organization, which talks about the binders, and it also talks about the note-taking process. So all the schools are using the Cornell note-taking process, which helps gather the student scores in the organization, and then they reuse those notes to take their test. And so we're teaching that, that's embedded in the Avid curriculum, and we're doing that district-wide.
So it's used across, across the board, it's not like they just take the class and forget about it?
No, it's the, every school is worldwide, and that's what we're pushing towards. And so last year, like for Avid, that was our first year with Avid, and we started out with the binders and the organizational skills with the Cornell notes. And so that was the first skill we thought we needed to teach the children was to, how to keep up with their notes, how to take their notes, and then how to use those notes then to study and to further their learning.
I want to revisit a question that I kind of brought up last meeting, and since I have the high school teachers here in front of me. We've been lauded for graduation rate. And the question I had last meeting was, with a ninety-one percent graduation rate but a forty-seven percent proficiency rate, how does that come to be? That's the question I haven't had a clear answer on. If forty-seven percent test lower than state average, how do we graduate ninety-one percent?
I'm glad you asked, because that, that bothers me as well. But I want to explain what I don't think a lot of people understand is with the way, especially with the North Carolina Common Exams, a student can quite honestly get seven out of thirty questions correct. That to me and you is not proficient. But with the curve, they may receive a seventy-eight or an eighty. That is enough to quite frankly give them what they need perhaps to pass the class. So they've earned the credit towards graduation because they received a passing grade on the test. So they received the credit towards graduation, but yet our proficiency is in the bottom. Does that make sense? That's not the answer to all of them, but that's an answer to a lot of them.
Help me understand, but the proficiency is based on EOG? But in high school, testing just three of, how many, how many courses do you teach at the high school?
Oh, dozens.
Dozens and dozens of courses, and the test only three courses?
Yes.
And they're in the, are they, is it true that they really are in the freshman and the sophomore year? So they're really not even looking at our juniors and seniors?
Yes. Yeah, when you, when you, when you look at, when you look at English two, biology, and math one, that is primarily freshmen and sophomores. You know, those proficiency levels are in the thirtieth and fortieth percentile. Those are not as curved as much as the NCFEs, but I do want folks to understand that's why the student can end up with the credit. Because with the NCFEs, there is a large curve. When you talk about just proficiency and just the numbers that the common layperson sees, that is strictly EOCs, and that is strictly a test that a student takes.
And I think that's what you're talking about, Ms. Bowen, is that correct? The, the EOCs?
Right, the proficiency scores that are published by DPI.
So I think what it boils down to is we could easily have ninety percent of students graduate but not do well on three tests on three different days throughout their high school career.
Can I ask a question too that I'm not, we keep talking about growth, but it, and growth to me is when you've got, you're seeing how one person does and then how they do later, that's a growth. But that's not this kind of growth, because the kids that are being measured on biology this year are not the same kids that took biology last year, is that correct?
That is correct, but there is a growth formula, and I'm not going to pretend to explain it, I will do as best I can. A student begins testing in third grade, and it shows a history of test data all the way through high school. And so that's what their growth that we see known as EVOs accounts for. So yes, it's not comparing the student that took biology last year to this year.
It's cohort analysis.
It is cohort analysis and taking into account based how the student did last year, how should they do this year? And either they perform at level, above level, or below level.
And I want to ask a question as well. We have a lot of students that are in the middle schools that are taking some high school classes in seventh and eighth grade, and I know that that affects the high school numbers as far as, as performance grades. Could you explain that, how that, how that affects it? How it affects you on the high school level when they're taking those classes in the middle school, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
As far as growth, it does not, because the growth, and I know Mr. Decker, do you correct me?
Growth, yeah, growth does not count for you when they take it at the middle school.
Growth only takes into account where you're seated when you actually take that test, but the proficiency, if a student takes it in the eighth grade, it is banked for one year, and then it comes to us. So we do get credit later on for that proficiency as if they would have taken it with us.
But not at first?
Not at first. Well, it, it comes the year they would have taken it with us.
Okay.
So for example, the students that took it last year in eighth grade, we will receive that proficiency credit, so to speak, this year.
Okay. Okay, so you're like a year behind with that.
It's stored, it's stored, and then the proficiency follows, but not the growth.
And fortunately, I mean, I'm excited that we offer those classes in the middle school, because I think that's a great option for some of our students, because it frees them up as they get into the eleventh and twelfth grade years to do Central Carolina Works or NAF or those other programs, which are great. But I just, you know, I think there's a misconception out there in the community about, about that, and a lot of people don't know that that affects your high school, you know, performance grades when they take them in the middle school, especially if we have a lot of students taking them.
And at the same time, one of the, I think one of the reasons why all of that is being done at that time was to get some of our students to be able to take just more than algebra and geometry, so that they can have more collaborating classes in math. That's why we started it in middle school. Well, the way it's turning out is now people do, realize that, that it's better for that child to have those fundamental, foundational courses over there, taking care of middle school, so that they can take algebra and other courses in high school. But right now, if we just say we want to delay it to have the growth the way people wanted it, it would just be like, some of these kids would not be able to finish what they need to do, and by the time they finish, and you look at them and say, "You didn't take this course and that course in high school," and it will be too late.
Yes, sir, I agree, and I think that those options are still available in Lee County for students at the middle school level, and they've looked really closely at, at the research to make sure that those students who, who need to be accelerated at the middle school level can continue to do that. But also, I think at, at the high school level, we're also really looking, when we're registering students individually, so that if, if, if they take it right on track, so they take math one in ninth grade and math two in tenth grade, we're still making sure that, you know, we all have a vision to be sure that they have more than just a high school diploma, so they could still take those courses. You know, we often will work out a schedule for an individual student if they want to take a course over the summer through Virtual Public High School, if they want to take, you know, gosh, there's so many examples. So in other words, even if we have a student who doesn't take those courses in middle school, we make sure, we make every effort at the high school level for them to have access to what they want to do and they want to be, to make sure that they get, they're on the track they want to be on when they get to us. But you're exactly right, we need to be sure that we still provide that at the middle school for those students who need it. But it has been a very complex issue and has impacted Midland High School, you know, if we look at it, so.
Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you for what you, what you're doing, and all of you together, and, and I will say to you all to say that with all of you, with all this plan that you bring to us tonight, I'm impressed, and we will be prayerfully following up on all of this with you guys, that everything will work out well as you begin to teach our children. You know, some of the things that we're talking about, you know, a lot of people talk about education, the fundamentals and the foundational are things that we, we need now for the education of the future, we can teach, because we don't know where, what technology, what they would need. Well, the education that someone, someone like my age has at the time we have, is not what the kids are doing. And sometimes when, when I'm talking to fifth graders, what they know about technology, I don't know, and I say, "Show me how to do this." So what we need to do is to teach them the foundational and the fundamental things they need, so that they can be able to progress in the education of the future. Maybe we will not have some of the things that we're talking about. Some of us have calculators in high school, and I don't remember using calculators, I had organic chemistry, I'm not in the lab, you know? Those are kind of things that you, you take, but when they're talking to you about it, you look like it's a brick now. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. I think they, they have pretty much said it all, but I have for you sort of an outline in three areas for sort of a roadmap for, for improvement that I'll provide to you. I'm really not going to go through that, because they've said everything that's on here right now. But basically outlined in three areas, student support, teacher support, and overall support. And it basically provides most of the things that they've- that they've said, and it's outlined on here in a one-page document for everybody.
So you're gonna get that document out to us, is that what you said?
Yeah, right now.
Oh, right now? Okay, all right.
And I think you'll see on there that, uh, it's pretty much everything you've heard tonight at the three different levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and, uh, you know, a lot of the support-
Are children. And with that being said, we have an obligation and responsibility to provide children with a great education, and this is an urgent concern, an urgent issue that we have, that we need to take care of, and we need to turn this around, and we need to make sure that we reach children in the classroom. And with that being said, you know, the plan that has been presented to us tonight by the different levels of the schools, and of course with Dr. Bryan just passed out, you know, I, I have high expectations of this as we move forward, and I do expect results. And I do want to see, as we progress with this, I wanna keep a real, I personally will be keeping a tight eye on this, and watching how things progress with this, and stay on top of our progress. But I also think as a board, we definitely need to stay on top of this, and, and watch the data as it comes in throughout the year, and watch how our progress is as it's being made. And so I ask that every month, we get an update on how things are going with this, with this plan, and what, what's going on in the schools, and with the data, so we can stay on top of this, because this is critical. We need to make sure that we, you know, turn this around and do what's best for our children. Um, and as a Board of Education, I feel like we also need to make sure that we're very supportive of our district as far as policies and changes that we need to make to help this process move forward, and is, as we go forward with this, because I want this to work. I want these, this plan to work. I want it to be successful. So I feel as a Board of Education, we need to make sure about that. And I'm happy with the things that we've already done. I know that, um, there's a lot of great things going on in the school system that I've seen over the last couple of years, and we've talked about those a lot tonight with Avid and Leader and Me, uh, the NAF Academy, Central Carolina Works. I mean, there's a lot of great things happening on all levels, and I'm excited about that. I really am. And I know that that will have a positive influence on our students in, as they grow and they learn, and, and their achievement, and I'm excited about that. I'm excited about some of the things we've done over the summer with the lead teachers. We've already done that. Um, we've had some personnel changes and realignment, like with, um, Dr. Chapel, and I think those are all very positive things as we move forward. And I'm glad that we've implemented some of it over the summer, and we're implementing it now, you know, as we go forward. We've, we've already been doing this, a lot of this as we move forward. And, and with that being said, I'd like to see, with, with student support, you know, we, we have a lot of challenges that are sometimes out of our control, and I'll get into those in a second. And so what I would like to see with student support is more support in the community, ways that we can work with the community to help us, because, you know, we, this is really a community effort, not just us, but a community. And, and I feel like if, if we're all working together this as a team, not just as a district as a team, because I do feel like we're a team throughout the district, but also throughout the community, we can get much more accomplished and have a much more positive income, I'm sorry, outcome. So thinking about community support, like, um, ways we could maybe ex- expand pre-K or emphasize pre-K, have, you know, working with nonprofits to help with issues that deal with poverty, because we all know that that plays a significant part in educating children, is the, um, issues of poverty and combating poverty is something that we always need to work on. So if there's ways we can maybe get community support on that, through nonprofits, through churches and businesses, to help our children be successful and to combat some of those influences of poverty. And also, teacher turnover, um, you know, some of it has definitely been out of our control. You know, locally, we only have so much control. Uh, one thing that was mentioned earlier, and we talked about, our, about the award for our commissioners, was that one percent supplement increase that we gave our commissioners, and that's, uh, from the commissioners for our teachers, and that's the first time they've had a supplement increase since two thousand and five. So it's been a long time, but really, you know, this really falls on the General Assembly in Raleigh, because, um, with the way teachers have been treated lately, honestly, with the leadership and the General Assembly over the last couple of years, it's making it harder and harder in North Carolina for us to, you know, be able to take care of our teachers like we should be, and treat them like the professionals that we are. We have a lot of teachers that are leaving the profession. We have a lot of teachers that are going to other states, and that's not helping with our growth, with our students. We wanna keep our teachers here, and we wanna take care of them. And so I think teacher turnover is definitely an issue. Most of that's out of our control locally, because it's on the state level, but I definitely would like to see us, and I know we will, but I'd like to see us to continue to provide those professional development opportunities for our, our teachers, and provide them support they need, and also to continue to work with our commissioners, so we can increase those supplements a little at a time, and continue to provide a great, um, working environment for our teachers here in Lee County, because I wanna keep them. So those are just some of the thoughts I have about, about growth moving forward. And I, I do feel strongly that we need to keep on top of the data on this. We need to make sure that we're progressing the way we want to throughout this year, and we need to make sure, as a board, and, and that we're watching this and staying on top of it. And I know I will, I will be watching it and staying on top of it, but I feel we all need to. And I do wanna have like a monthly report on the update, on updates on how things are going as we move forward with this, and that's just one of my suggestions. But, but I, I really do believe in our school system, and no, I'm not happy with the growth scores, and I do feel they were unacceptable, and I'm concerned about them. But I feel like as we go forward with this plan, and we go forward in the school year, that we can definitely work hard to bring and turn that around. Thank you, and I'll go into my committee report. All right, the, um, Curriculum Instruction Committee, we have met twice since our last meeting. Uh, we had our middle school curriculum instruction meeting on September ninth, and, um, we all met together with the middle school, uh, middle school folks, and we talked about the graduation rate. We talked about graduating with credentials, growth, and the plans for growth. Um, Mr. Conway introduced our lead teachers that we have in the county, um, Ms. Perkins, Ms. Layton, and Ms. Davis, and they are support for teachers, and that's something we've already implemented that we've talked about with, with Growth Plan. Um, and we talked about curriculum alignment. Uh, we talked about, um, Sandley, Wesley, and Eastly all talked about, uh, Avid, about expanding Avid in Wicker, and lots of energy behind it. We also, uh, Easly also talked about their sixth grade academy, and a couple other schools are doing sixth grade, but it all went well. Uh, Bragg Street, um, talked about, you know, about their Avid moving well, and how that's, it's being well-received in, in Bragg Street as well. And they also are, added an art physician, and they talked about that. Um, we also talked about the district-wide websites, sort of what they were talking about for teachers, and resources for teachers that the, the elementary school, uh, folks showed earlier. And, um, we talked about, uh, ESL training for principals and vice principals at the middle school level. Then we had our elementary school curriculum instruction committee, which met on September sixteenth. Um, and also during that time, um, we talked about, the superintendent talked about accountability results and growth, and we also talked about the Wicker School announcement. Uh, Mr. Conway talked about structured phonics, um, and SRA reading mastery at some of the different elementary schools. We, uh, talked about Avid being, uh, countywide in fourth and fifth grades throughout the county. Broadway, the second and third grade had added it this year, and Edwards is in third, fourth, and fifth grade. We also talked about instructional support, the AIG specialists, literary specialists, and tutors. Uh, kindergarten reported about their staggered entry and how it was positive and went well, and that was a change that we implemented during this year back in the spring, about ways that we can better improve children coming into kindergarten, and assessing them in a, in a more efficient and better way. Um, they talked about the math websites, resources for teachers, and that was very impressive, and that's some of what we saw earlier. And they also talked about literacy instruction at all schools, and Floyd Knight started that new, the new program that she mentioned, uh, tonight, and that's going very well. So that was, uh, my report for curriculum instruction. We've got a few meetings coming up, actually, a lot of meetings coming up. The next curriculum instruction meetings, we've got, um, high school will be at Southern Lee on October twenty-first. The middle school curriculum instruction will be at West Lee on October twenty-eighth, and the elementary will be at Ingram on November fourth, and those are all at three-thirty in the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, Mrs. Burgen, and thank you for your comments. I think everybody on this board shares your concerns and your expectations. Uh, let's continue with facilities and technology. Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we held our last, uh, facilities meeting on, uh, September twenty-ninth, and we discussed, uh, the company, Amaresco, and about an energy savings plan, and, uh, it's only a consent agenda tonight to, um, for approval to do a county-wide, uh, assessment. Uh, we also talked about the HVAC units at West Lee, and that's only a general night, too. If you have any questions about the Amaresco situation, I think me or Campbell Warren could, could help you out on that. But, uh, we're just asking at this point to, uh, let the company come in and, and assess, report back to us about what kinda savings that they may be able to give us. Our next facilities meeting is, uh, October twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Uh, let's, uh, proceed with finance. Mr. Akonosho?
Thank you. Uh, we had our meeting, uh, on October seventh. Uh, our meeting was delayed because of the, uh, budget process from, from, uh, the legislators, but we had a meeting last week, and we, uh, agreed the, uh, reconciliation of the, uh, of the budget, and the summary of, uh, the budget report, uh, is in the consent agenda for twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Also, we have the base schedule for twenty fifteen and twenty sis- uh, twen- twenty sixteen, uh, base schedules for, uh, on the FYI, FYI. The policy, uh, twenty-one thirty, which are the Board of, uh, uh, with the compensation for Board of Education, and, and, uh, all of that is in, uh, consent agenda also. The, uh, the board experience is on the, uh, FYI.
Thank you, Mr. Akonosho. Uh, policy, Mrs. Bowen?
The policy committee did not meet last month. We had some delay in the policies coming out of Raleigh, so we postponed that one, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the twentieth. However, the policy committee does have two policies on for second reading this evening, and those are just carryovers from last month.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowen. Uh, continuing with the agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The consent agenda is approved. Uh, under unfinished business, uh, Mrs. Bowen, would you like to move, uh, that we approve, uh, board policies on second reading?
I would, and I don't have those two policy numbers. Thank you very much. I moved that the Lee County Board of Education approve the second reading of policies, thirty-four sixty and forty-one ten. I was trying to pull it up and wasn't quick enough.
I was on it.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the second reading of these board policies? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The board policies are approved. Uh, proceeding with new business, uh, is there a motion, uh, to approve, uh, the reconciled budget book, Part One and Part Two? Mr. Finance Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we, uh, we approve the, uh, the, uh, the report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the reconciled budget book as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The reconciled budget is approved. And, Mr. Akonosho, if you would like to make a motion for closed session, we will adjourn, uh, to closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that Lee County Board of Education go to closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is prevalent, confidential, or not in public, but under NCGS, one, four, three, two, one, just one, like it, one, one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
The mo- has been moved and seconded, uh, that we go to closed session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We will retire to closed session. We're, uh, back in session, uh, open session. Uh, is there a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion passes. Um, is there a motion to, that we adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.